Welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board meeting of Tuesday, May 9th, 2017. Now called to order at approximately 7:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded and broadcasted live by local access programming. Is there anyone in the audience that is coalescing or taking notes in tonight's meeting? There being none, please rise and join us in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, and each of the planning board members to please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted my dissent. The first item on our agenda this evening is, there's two A and R plans. The first one is at 47 and 53 Oxford Street North, which is in the vicinity of the old Pond Lumbercoast. Can you give us your name and tell us?
Sure. Peter Little. I lived at 47 and I'm moving into 53 as we speak. And I built 53 about 10 years ago. My stepdad, who passed away a year ago in November, so I rented it for a year and now we're gonna be moving there and we're downsizing.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
So, we have a four sort of standard A and R plan. The purpose of this plan is to, is unique from most folks who are here to buy and try to find sellable lots. This is a rare situation where Mr. Little is actually correcting the situation between him and his neighbors to make everyone happy. So, what we have here is a rear parcel behind house number 53, which is part of 47, known as parcel A. Parcel A is being combined with house 53, becomes their backyard. Behind that is parcel B, it's a shed owned by three Gwen Drive that's being sectioned off and given to the resident at Gwen Drive. And parcel C is closer to Oxford Street North. This rectifies the encroaching driveway situation to the south of block 53 on 55 Oxford Street South. Otherwise, the plan meets all the standard requirements of subdivision control law and I have no objections or other comments related to the plan.
It's the Gambrillo, which is for sale right on the 47.
47 is the old Herbie Pond House. So, it's only had two owners. They've been there for 66 years and we've been here for 22 years and they still call it the Herbie Pond House. But we love that we've remodeled and fixed every room in the house and we're gonna downsize. The house I built next door is a little small. It's got a first floor master and a little more yard space. So, we've sold the 47 and they already are aware of the plot lines that are gonna get changed. So, when I built 53 for my stepdad, not knowing how long I was gonna be there, I just gave him basically the minimum requirements for that house in case anything ever happened to him down the line. And we didn't know what was gonna happen with it. I wanted to keep most of the land with 47 because that was my house. And if you ever drive by there, we maintain and take care of the whole property for both houses for the last 20 years. So, now we're trying to fix all the mistakes that were done on the surveying before. So, if they ever wanna sell the house next door, the guy in the garage doesn't have to, the shed doesn't have to actually move his shed. So, I'm just trying to straighten everybody's lots, make it easy for you guys and for us. And I've already talked to both the neighbors and they're all pretty happy that we're gonna get straightened out. So, if they ever wanna sell someday, you don't have to worry about coming to do this.
You're being very neighborly. Do the neighbors all sign?
Scott, any questions?
They all signed the application.
John?
No.
Indeed?
No. Sounds good.
Motion?
Motion to accept. And has presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Here's a vote.
Thank you, guys.
My honor.
Did you want us to sell the Herbie Pond House?
No. And we worked with my wife and she's crying and I'm like, "How so, why are we doing this?" It's such a beautiful house.
It's gorgeous.
And, you know, my kids moved, we moved in there when the kids were young. Kids are all out and having new babies and now getting the grandpa and it's sad because I just love that house. It's beautiful. It really is.
Well, my middle name was a, she was a maid for Mrs. Pond back in the early 1900s.
Yes. I've heard nothing but great stuff about her. She's a sweetheart. She was.
I was seeing forecomes of her.
Yeah.
I think everybody in town has something to do with that.
Yeah, I've heard a lot of stories.
When you see an hollow outside.
Oh, we painted probably three times in the 22 years. There was one crew I had, I work with a lot of builders. I own closet and storage in town as well. So, we had a painter from working for one of the builders and they literally took that front door and sanded it down. I think one guy was on it for three days trying to get it down to the wood. But we did, we kept it all wood. Kept all the wood shut.
Was it cracked upstairs at 1.2?
No. Above the lumber yacht.
The lumber yacht.
And then one on the other side of it, the yellow house has it.
Oh, that's the one thing.
Yeah. That's a beautiful house, too. That's what I need. Thank you, guys, very much.
That Mylar goes to registry and that's your copy.
Thanks, guys. Have a great night. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Not really. Nice people.
Next A and I that we have is Hyde Scrabble Road.
I'm Joff Norcross, the office manager for Casolo Wasteland Recycling in Auburn. And we're looking to combine some plots here.
May elaborate?
Go ahead.
Jim, thank you. So, I asked representative for Casolo B here, and those are very simple situation. All they're doing, there's four lots on site currently and they're making it all one lot. And this is another one of those situations where it's positive, we're not sectioning off things or something else. But as it stands now, the building exists on three separate lots and then there was a deep back lot, so they combined for 15, 17, 18, 20.
She said they're not sectioning it off for something else?
No. They are making this all one lot with the existing lot lines as presented.
So, you have no intention of building anything on that other section?
If I, Mr. Chairman, so if Casolo did introduce a concept plan for station to the DCG maybe a month ago or so, but this would allow them to at least do anything with their property without having to deal with the A and R in the future. So, if they did have expansion, they would run into non-conforming lot lines.
But they'd still have to come before us?
Of course.
Any questions, Scott?
John?
Wendy? Any in our audience members have any questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to accept. These are presented.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Here's a vote.
N O R C R O S S. G E O F F R Y. You're welcome.
Lot space.
I know it.
I think you're good. They only gave me three, so I need three. They didn't, uh...
You can have that one back.
They didn't give me a paper for themselves.
That's fine. Thank you very much.
All right. Take care.
You, too.
We have a discussion at 7:00 PM. It is the Reserve at Ashworth Hill for plan endorsement and covenant execution. Matt? Can you please state your name and company and...
Sure. Yep. Chad Boardman and Phil Carracho, Representative of Lake River Lake, LLC, for the Reserve at Ashworth Hill, cleaning up some administrative definitive plans for the Mylars and also the covenant itself. Actually, Matt can speak on a few small edits on that. By me and Mr. Chairman, I have a revised covenant from the item that went out to do some comments from town council. There was one line in here that they wanted to read differently, rearrange, which Mr. Boardman was kind to oblige and they sent me over a fresh, provided today at the meeting, fresh copy of the signatures along with the covenant that is notarized. So, I, myself and town council are satisfied with the language in the covenant.
And the one that you passed out?
Yes, sir. It's just the one copy that we would sign it for the board. Votes to...
What is the correction?
That the correction was that the, the way that it read...
Which page?
Uh, sorry, this is page two. It's in item nine. It's on the one that went out, I think I had it highlighted.
Yeah.
Perhaps. It's in the middle of the page. It begins with failure to complete construction and installation within the time specified herein or such later date as may be specified by a vote of the board with written concurrence of the applicant shall result in automatic rescission of the approved plan. Town council felt that, just the way it read, despite, it wasn't intended that way, the sentence represented in a manner that implies the planning board needs the applicant's concurrence before it rescinds the plan. So, it was changed to, to read as the following. So, we read of construction of the ways and installation of the municipal service is not completed within the specific, within the time specified herein, excuse me, and then in parentheses or such later date as may be specified by the board with a written concurrence of the applicant or its success. Close parentheses. The planning board may rescind the approval of the plan after compliance with MGL 4181W. So, council made a recommendation. These one was responded and they made the adjustment for us. The other items...
Let me see.
Sure.
It's right here, the self plan. How it was, now how it is. Just gonna go over the items and the conditions that you were trying to...
Sure. No problem. To the final, maybe, Mr. Chairman, just to add a few other things. The decision that we rendered back in March had a handful of conditions that needed to be, needed to be added to the plan before we endorsed it. And one of them was to get the address numbers from the assessor, which have been added to the plan. Would also be soil testing performed by, as witnessed by Grand Engineering, according to the stormwater management guidelines. And the results would be provided to the planning board prior to the endorsement of the plan, and I have those results here. The other item was to add the new street name to the plan, which has been added as Artemis Drive.
What drive?
Artemis Drive.
Artemis Drive.
Those are the three.
That's correct, yeah.
Someone a wild, wild west fan?
No, it was one of, what was it?
Part of the...
Adam's...
Artemis Ward.
Yeah.
One of the founders of our... Other than that, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any objection to the covenant or endorsement of the plan.
So, these are both changes around the plan?
Yes, sir.
You're gonna read.
Yep.
Scott, any questions?
No questions.
Tom? Wendy? Anybody from the audience have any questions on this? Matt? Anybody?
When they're gonna stop building? It's gonna be on Rockwell, Fourfield Street. Is this, oh, Tink Hall area?
Yes.
Is there anywhere you could put the light on sound that the desk light?
Well, you're not, you're not starting anything yet. You just, this is just...
What was that? That stream light, did he say? Well, I was just...
Matt represents the handicap.
Yeah, this light. Just wondering. That's a good one. I knew it'd be nice if I was not. Ted?
Can I ask, yeah, my question to the chairman. You mentioned earlier today, you guys may be starting some work next week.
On Albert Street, on Tree Clinic, along that street, and the Y, that has to take place there, yes. At Tree Clinic.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, the town engineer, Billy Spector, and I, along with Phil, met on site to do preconstruction, walk through Evolvo Street, because that's where they'll start the road improvements first. And that's just part of it, one of the things that they're hoping to do is get some trees down as soon as next week, but notifying the voters by visiting or delivering a letter to the voters on Albert Street to let them know this can be taken place as soon as next week to start the right way clear.
Anything else?
Was the preconstruction video taken on Albert Street?
We did, but I don't know if the town did.
Can we get a copy of that?
Sure, yeah. Sure, yeah. There's already been a few updates that we're gonna do with Bill Coyle, you know, some of the basins had redoing, we're gonna put brand new stuff in, so we're gonna be better than the plan.
So, we, this is just discussion.
There'll be two votes, there'll be a, a vote to actually covenant and a vote to endorse the plan. Two separate votes.
Scott, John, Wendy, have all ready to be settled?
Do we make a motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to accept the covenant?
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Here's a vote.
Press this around the sign because I have to notarize it, so, the members, please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear that you understand what you're signing, and you do so under your prayer book?
Yes.
Thank you.
Who put the dates, man?
Yes.
And I'm gonna make a copy of that before you leave.
Sure, yeah.
Keep the original.
Yeah.
Matt, was I here at the start of the, this, this here?
This subdivision here?
Yeah.
I don't believe so, but it's, you can still endorse the language for its legality.
Okay, we now need a motion to endorse the plan.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second it?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Here's a vote.
The applicant's request, typically we sign the pages of the lot layout plan. The applicant has requested if, if the board wishes, if they would be able to sign all the pages of the plan. Board doesn't have to, the board can, it's entirely up to the board. It depends on how tired your hands are.
Is there any reason for that?
I've had one instance in the past where the plans have been distributed in the past, since there've been so many variations. A town actually had an older copy and for some reason at the DPW and they were going by the old copy and that's my only thing, sometimes with everybody's drawing Hancock, you know that the plan's right.
So, we can sign the cover page and as if we knew.
Yeah. Totally fine. That'd be great.
You okay with that, Scott?
I'm fine. I think it makes sense.
I'll go on that copy. And we'll start that, that end if that makes sense, and we'll start these over here. These are just lot layouts to throw like the clerk and the assessors.
Sure.
Please need to sign one of this and initial the rest of the pages, right?
You guys have to sign the first five pages of that, cause that gets recorded to the right sheet.
First five of this?
These are for our records.
Okay. So, you sign the first one and which one is the one that you want an initial on, each one of these?
The paper ones.
One of these?
No, actually, the, it doesn't really matter. The Mylars, the Mylars would be better, yeah.
That's what gets recorded.
The first five, we have to record them, that ones with like the plan and profile or landscaping plan, just your, just the initial would be fun.
Sign the first five on the Mylar and initials on the other.
Yeah.
On these one.
Just the first one on this one?
This one, come here.
Yeah, it's just initial, I mean, yeah. Yeah, those are all initial, you see?
It's like the...
Actually, actually two signatures, the two initials would be found, because I don't even know somebody signed them. So, that's recorded.
Yep, is it the layout sheet?
We got a leather set that we're using outside.
Exactly. Exactly.
Move. Turn that issue out.
For?
Issue it?
Yeah.
Too much, yeah. A lot of people. Oh, there had to be fifteen people there, maybe more. It's like a morgue. The pens held up?
Yeah.
So far, that's the rest of the matter. That's the last one, Scott, that's one.
Sure.
Try not to crease it. Scott, I got one for you, too. Round top. Is that now?
Yeah, I showed you.
It almost looks like an initial.
I'm used to the big one.
That actually, that is my initial.
More work than your actual.
Standard, but I use it.
Good. Let's get this thing out of here. You guys don't, we should slide it down.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't wanna crease it. Fill in that, that's all.
You have the covenant?
Yep, I have everything recorded, yep, yep, and I'll give you the book and page and...
And you'll give Matt a copy of the tape?
Yeah. Yeah, sure will, yep. And we'll check in with Bill in case he, Bill does it as well, but we can give you our copies as well.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks a lot.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Okay, we have our first public hearing at 7:10. The applicant is Masad Family LLC requesting an approval of a preliminary subdivision plan under section 3.2 of the Auburn Subdivision Rules and Regulations for realignment of a portion of 54 Faith Ave, Auburn Mass, the site of Diamond Auto Group's GM service facility. Map 61, possible, 15. Is the applicant present?
Present.
Presentant, you state your names and your...
I'm Michael Scott, I'm an engineer at Waterman Design Association, let's vote.
Joseph Simon, General Manager, Diamond Auto Group.
If you have a motion, open the hearing.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I know you have, sorry, I know you have the board up, but there's a lot of lines on the plan, so I had something in more color, it makes it easier to see.
Do you have anything?
Uh, I don't know much of this project, so.
Why don't you proceed?
Sure, again, Mike Scott, Waterman Design. The matter at hand, I think, right here is the preliminary plan, is that we're talking about at this point. At here, so the... There's a brief backstory, I know Mr. Brooks was here several years ago when we came in on behalf of Diamond. And they built, if you're familiar with the facility, they have a Cadillac and general, uh, other general motors sales out on Washington Street, which is at the bottom of the plan. And they have a service facility that they built within Faith Ave, sort of the loop of Faith Ave. That building was constructed beyond the limits of the approved plan. So, in order to remedy that, not have to remove a portion of the building, the, uh, we met years ago with the then-planning and building staff, and there was a discussion of creating a subdivision to, in essence, relocate the road to the west side of the building, over here. Which would then create a new piece of Faith Ave with the goal of abandoning, discontinuing the existing loop around the building. So the right-of-way would become, in essence, sub-surplus property, which could then hopefully be acquired by the Massids, which would correct their lot area and other zoning non-compliance situations that they had out here on the property. We filed a definitive plan, we filed special permit applications with the zoning board to correct the conditions they created that were non-compliant, and we filed with the Concom all back in 2013. The zoning board approved the modifications to their special permits, which were for use and which were for development within a lot, this is a groundwater recharge zone in town. There's more impervious than allowed by right, but they were able to get the impervious area increased by special permit, so the zoning board allowed those to. The planning board was moving in a positive direction, I felt, towards approval of the subdivision, but the Conservation Commission ultimately denied the application due to wetlands fill, they didn't believe it could, the wetlands could be successfully replicated. A year and a half ago or so, we redesigned that wetland replication, and the Conservation Commission approved the project as you see it now.
With the road where it is?
With the road where it was and where it is here, that we didn't move the road, we simply moved wetland replication. So, in terms of the proposed build-out and the proposed infrastructure and all the improvements that are sort of physical improvements that the town would hopefully ultimately accept as part of the subdivision, and the way that the lot would sit in the future relative to zoning, nothing's changed on the plan. It's really, it was just a matter of decreasing the wetland replication in this area where the town, the Concom didn't believe, and the DEP didn't believe the replication would be successful, shrinking that to get it closer to the existing wetland, and then doing some work down at the back of their property where there's a wetland that's been degraded from runoff and that can be expanded, and...
You show us on the print what part on the loop with the existing road is, not within the one is, down there, what section of that land is owned by the town?
Right, as we understand...
What would be the towns if the road is abandoned?
So this blue line, it's probably not easy to see the color, but that's, that would, from there to this blue line, and then everything outside this sort of reddish-brown line. So this piece would become the surplus.
So the width of the road and the length of it.
Correct, and that's a 40-foot right-of-way. So this was the old Central Street, and this was the Oxford Street.
Diamond would look to acquire that from the town?
Right, in exchange for this shorter piece, newly constructed road. Well, that's something, obviously, it's gotta be worked out with town council and planning board and others.
When you say exchange, if the existing is 1,000 feet and the new is 400, you're gonna, you're gonna give, you know, you want 400 of it to be for the new road in exchange, and then you would wanna look to acquire the balance of...
If it's become surplus property, yes, if it were disposed of, the Massids, the goal is for them to acquire that in order to remedy their zoning non-compliance. And what that would, would allow them, they're the only upholders right now, except for the DOT on the outside here. So, right now, they're, people are walking across, they're driving trucks across, they're driving cars across.
Well, that road is still...
Public way.
Public way.
Yeah, absolutely, that's what I'm getting at, so the, Diamond is using it almost like, I don't wanna implicate anyone here, but I mean, in effect, they're, they're walking across the road, the only one that's actually using both sides of the street. If this piece were abandoned...
Well, I mean, they can cross the street.
Of course, but it, but it just makes it easy, they don't have to worry about traffic anymore, because it's their own site, so it just, just for their sake, it simplifies their operations. And it, you know, it eliminates the better part of 1,000 feet of road that you don't have to plow anymore, that doesn't have to be maintained anymore. There's a water system in it that is somewhat antiquated, that can, we've discussed with the water district how to fix that. You get new utilities, a new road, it'd be built to modern construction standards. Mr. Coils looked at this. It's been peer reviewed by Graves way back in 2013. We've addressed all their comments with, with the new plan.
I remember back then that there was a problem with the wetlands.
Yep, and that's what, that's what ultimately, the application was withdrawn from this board after a year of continuances, because it was clear that Concom was kinda going backwards, not forward, and then... And then, so we refiled, we originally had refiled just a definitive, through Matthew, careful reading of the state law. A preliminary is required in non-residential subdivisions, this is non-residential, so we fired, filed a preliminary application. It's the same set of plans that are with the definitive, it's the same scope of word. But, so the hope was to get the preliminary behind us and then move on to the definitive, which, again, is the same scope of word.
So what is it you're looking, what are we being asked to do? Approve the new road and allow the abandonment of the existing?
Not yet. So, due to the technicality which they law, we have to review this as a preliminary concept plan first. So, knowing that this had been reviewed and had only changed per peer review comments four years ago, I couldn't use that as a preliminary plan qualifier, because it's too long ago. And because it's not residential, as Mr. Scott pointed out, we had to do this technicality just to put a preliminary plan in front of us. So if the board is comfortable with the way it's laid out and is ready to talk in more detail at the definitive level, we could move this preliminary item right along and then go right into the definitive public hearing, which is scheduled next. So this is just laying out as is, if you're not seeing any other major changes with where the roads proposed at this point. We don't have to go into the technicalities yet, it's just a matter of how it's laid out right now.
Scott, at this point, that's what you just, Mike?
That's okay. Used to, yes.
So it's, the only thing you're bringing before us is the proposed abandonment of one section and the new section to go in?
That's correct, for the preliminary, this is just to demonstrate that it meets the standards, and it's a precursor to the definitive filing, which has already been filed, but can't be heard until this is behind us.
Scott, any questions?
No, just a second.
John?
Yeah, you got permission from the state to do this?
Hi, Mr. Chairman. So we have a conversation with Mastut, and he's happy to talk to those, talk about that at the definitive, because they're, they had some concerns. Yeah.
Anything else, John?
So that would go for the electrical portion and all of that as well?
Yep.
The definitive is all, your utilities are all, yes.
That's right.
Anyone in the audience have any comments?
Anyone?
Go ahead, man.
I have one question. Are you going to like public hearing now, or is...
We're in a public hearing right now for a preliminary subdivision plan on this.
So you ask all my questions now?
You can...
You can, you can ask them now, or you can wait, because it's all, it's all gonna come up in the next one in a few minutes. Whatever you want, go ahead, if you want, ask it now, or you go.
Mark off Wolffield Street, are you gonna put a sidewalk? With the drag type?
We did, there's, there are the list of waivers, I didn't mention that, with both the preliminary and the definitive. There's a request not to build sidewalk here, because there's no sidewalks along Washington Street, and there's presently no sidewalks along Faith Ave.
I'd like to see a sidewalk.
So we haven't proposed any right now, there's adequate space to provide a sidewalk?
On state, to provide a sidewalk from the inception of Washington Street right through on the new section to the old part of Faith Ave?
There's room to put a sidewalk along this piece with the layout of the new road. I'm not sure physically how easy it would be to get a sidewalk here.
I know that we looked at that once, and there's a bank in there, and there was, because we were looking at how the employees walked down, or people would walk down in the back, I'm not sure if there was enough, but at least on the new section, we can consider it.
Last thing I picked up to solve the street.
Where will the employee parking be, is it gonna be anywhere near there that needs to have a sidewalk?
When we get to the modification of the site plan, I can show you where the employee parking spaces will be. The answer is no, they don't need to get to the street, again, if it's abandoned, they can just, it'll be all one. In essence, it's three properties or four properties, but it would, they would be able to cross what used to be Faith Ave without having to cross the public way, so no, they don't have to leave the site to get around.
Anybody else, any members? Do we have a motion to close the preliminary plan here?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Seconded.
Just thinking. Do you wanna talk about something else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's vote.
Should've answered, I believe it's the same on both.
There's a few more with the definitive, because the preliminary requires less detail.
But all of the ones that are in the preliminary are probably more than a different...
That's correct, yep.
Do we have a motion to approve... Do we have a motion to approve the preliminary plan?
You make that motion?
One second.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Second public hearing of the night is 7:15. The applicant is Masad Family LLC requesting an approval of a definitive subdivision plan under Section 3.3 and site plan approval under Section 9.4.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for realignment of a portion of 54 Faith Ave, Auburn, Mass, the site of Diamond Auto Group's GM service facility, map 61, parcel 15. Again, this is the definitive subdivision plan. Do we have a motion to open the hearing?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. The applicant is present, would you state your names again for the?
Sure, Michael Scott, Engineer Waterman Design Associates, Joseph Lehman, General Manager, Diamond Auto Group.
But that is all separate?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Matt, do you have anything?
Same idea, but just to introduce, start kinda with the waivers would be nice. Okay, so again, same plan that was here four years ago, and I'll run through the list of waivers, which were in the application, that's three pages, not three full pages, but.
Will you read them?
Yeah, I will, yes. So the first waiver is actually no longer necessary because it was from Section 3.2.1 and it was a request to forego a preliminary plan. As Matt stated earlier, state law doesn't allow that, requires a filing of a preliminary.
We just did it.
We just did it, so that, that one, no way. The next couple are really plan content related, not, like not substantive relative to the project. One is from Section 3321A, which requires a location plan of the property be drawn at 1 inch equals 200 feet. We're able to show the entire property on a single plan, and we have a cover sheet that that gives you a location plan, it's just not at 200 feet, one per 200. So we're requesting that the plan that shows the entire project be considered satisfactory in its place.
With 1 inch equaling 200?
40 scale, correct.
You wanna use the 40 scale instead of the 200 scale?
Correct. Which is, which is what we have, you can see all the buttons because there's only four of ours basically. The next is from a waiver from Section 3321C, which is for a sketch plan, which is to show alternatives of the subdivision layout. We did this in 2013 with town staff. Again, it was Mr. Brunnick's predecessor, as well as Mr. Moody's predecessor, and we're hoping, hopeful that the preliminary plan could serve as that. And again, numerous options had been reviewed. Essentially, the wetlands create a barrier to what could be done, so that's why the road is where it is. We had looked at pushing it farther to the west, it couldn't be made to work. The next two relate to the same matter. Section 3321J and 3321O relate to the use of the survey datum NABD 1988, which is the most current mass GIS elevation. Everything we've done is based on NGVD 29, primarily because that's what, all the plans we inherited, if you will, going back to the days when Cullen and others were doing the projects here, were all on the 29 data, they were pre-88. So we've left everything on 29, but we do have a note on the plan explaining the difference in elevation, establishing that adjustment, if you will, which is roughly seven tenths of a foot. So we haven't redrawn all the profiles, we haven't redrawn all the topography, but we do have an elevation adjustment factor on the plan. The next one is Section 3321Q, it's for a tree plan. We don't show any trees along the proposed frontage right now. The east side of the road is wooded and we feel that that's sufficient. I started the other day on the west side.
Show us where you're talking about.
I'll go back to that. So we don't show any trees on the plans on the east side, north is this way. Primarily for two reasons, this is a retail use and obviously they want people to see it. Secondly, there's a landscape plan that's required from the site plan, and we know that that can be made to be attractive and functional for their use, and we believe offset the requirement for tree planting. And then this side of the site is wooded.
Now?
Through here. Now, some of this has come down recently.
Now, the landscaping plan you just spoke for the site, that's from the original Plan 3, isn't it?
I will get to that too, yes, there's, I will be, I was.
We're not complete with that or?
There's been no landscaping, no landscaping on this site that's in compliance with the previous site plan, and when I talk about the site plan modification, I can explain to some folks in some detail why that is, I believe. So we were not looking to put street trees on the site, on the either side of the street. On this side of the street, there's a proposed retaining wall, again, to minimize the impacts to the wetlands, and that's been reviewed by Mr. Coyle and by Graves Engineering. And then this side is where we were, I was suggesting a few moments ago that a sidewalk would fit, at least through this piece of the frontage, but there's no sidewalk here, there's no sidewalk here, and there's no sidewalk along that section of Faith.
But on the lower long rectangular building, right where you're right-handed, it's right there, if people are crossing in that area, that's, that's flat with that, the end of that building, isn't it?
It's relatively flat right through here, yep. There's presently a crosswalk.
And as you go west on Faith, you're gonna get, you get steeper coming up onto the back of the big showroom.
This is steeper.
So you're not gonna, not likely to cross there, but it would be nice to see a sidewalk on that east side of that new proposed road, I think. And if there's anything you can do to put something in that crosses people at that point, even if you have to come into the bank and or whatever it is, or go back down Faith Ave and into your other thing, or get into the bank and then up on, put some steps or something up onto that, the back of that showroom, see people going from there to, or walking down the road.
Okay, we can look at that. There will be a waiver request, I will get to that. So we're on the trees, so that's, that's why we didn't include the trees. We know that, that when we get to talk about the site plan, the landscaping plan needs to be entirely redone because of the new geometry of the site. The approved plan had a number of things that have to change. Doesn't have to be material, but it has to be location and other. The next request is from Section 3321T, that is for the staking of the proposed centerline in the field. It's very evident where the centerline is because you can see from one side of the road.
Not really, you've got two curves in the road, so tell me how the centerline is.
Well, you won't be able to walk exactly the path, well, again, as you can tell where the road is as opposed to it being somewhere in the woods.
You're talking about the new proposed road?
That's correct, this proposed road between, between physical markers out there such as light poles and other edges of pavement. If we, when we did this with the Concom, if we stayed here, it's pretty evident where the road is. We can stake it, my feeling is you can see it's a straight, more or less a straight line. It's not buried in the woods.
You can just stake it anyway to build the road.
If provided it's approved, of course, yes. The next is from, the next is from, if you've been out there, this is so thick, this wetland area is so thick, you wouldn't see the stakes unless we cleared the wetland out. I mean, it's all multi-four rows and any number of lines. The next is a waiver from Section 4.2.2, Table 1, which has to do with right-of-way width and sidewalk. As I mentioned, those sidewalks are proposed relative to the right-of-way width. The proposal here is to create a 40-foot right-of-way that's consistent with the road or the right-of-way on either end rather than a 50-foot right-of-way. Presently, Faith is 40 feet from this point all the way out to Southbridge Street, so we're proposing a 40-foot right-of-way. Next is 4.2.2, Table 2, which is related to the minimum right-of-way width. Again, we're, we've selected 40 feet to be consistent with the rest of the road. Same table, minimum centerline radius. The proposed centerline does have the two curves you mentioned, they're both a 110-foot radius, that is less than would be required for this road under, in normal conditions. They're greater than the, than this roughly 80-foot centerline here, and they meet the site distance and stopping site criteria for, for the posted speeds. So we feel that those road, those centerline radii are appropriate. Same table, sidewalks on both sides of the street are required. Again, we're asking that no sidewalks be required. I understand there's certainly an interest in at least one. The next waiver request is from Section 4.2.4.2, which has to do with the centerline radius again, and as explained just a minute ago, we're requesting a reduction to 110 feet. Again, that's adequate for site distance and in excess of what's on the site today. The next is from 4.2.5.1, which is the minimum right-of-way width, and again, we talked about that.
40 feet.
40 feet instead of 50. The next is, now this is a real construction issue along, similar to the sidewalks. The next is 4.3.1.1. Granite curving is required on radii of less than 100 feet. The centerline's 110, which means the inside of these two curves would require granite curving. We're showing vituminous berm, which is consistent with the rest of the road. The rest of Faith has vituminous.
What type of vituminous berm?
It's the six-inch reveal. I don't know if it's type A, type B, type C, but it's a six-inch reveal, it's not a King Kong. Next is from Section 4.9.2.5, which is for detention basin fencing. There's a small, the storm drain system involves a pipe that would run along this section of what's presently Faith Road with an outlet here, which would then run to a proposed channel and make its way to this part of the site which is low and adjacent. This is the off-ramp from, to 20 from 395. So there's a small, we modeled it as a detention basin, it's on the order of, can hold water of no more than three feet, so we, and it would be on what would eventually become the Masses' property, so, we hope. So our feeling is it's not really warranted, one, it's shallow, and two, it's remote from the road and it's remote from the site, and it wouldn't even be on public property, again, if the road was turned over.
Well, we still, even when they're on private property, I think, Matt, require fences, you know, it's a safety issue with kids.
And I agree for a large.
If it's ground and six, and we had it up on, apart from Stone Rock's property, I think that they'll be required. And it wasn't gonna have a lot of depth to it, it's just a safety issue, it's not any gigantic expense, I don't think, it's what we require.
Okay. Perhaps we could discuss a vegetative barrier or something in lieu of, it's just some siliness in maintenance, but if it's what's required, and I don't think it's not objectionable, it's just in our minds not necessary.
I may just share opinion with my own, Mr. Brooks, because it's, I was just looking at Faith Ave, I mean, from, from up above, and I mean, when Mr. Scott mentions that this is remote, I mean, there's nothing touching this other than the highway. I mean, even if, I'm not sure what could be in this general area other than staff or customers of Diamond. In a lot of cases, I'm thinking of Windmill Estates in particular, where we did do the fence, which is right in front, it's close to the public way, the Prospect Street, near neighbors, near other houses, near other people. This thing really is hiding.
You know, it is, it is, but there's customers that come with kit, you just don't know. I mean, I think it's so.
Is that a safe one, sorry?
Okay, not a big, I don't think it's a big issue from my, it's not a big issue from our perspective. Two more. The next is Section 4.11.1, which is related to the sidewalks for the full length of the proposed road on both sides. Again, we've asked for no sidewalks, understanding that at least one is certainly of interest to this board. And then the last is a construction standards issue, that's related to Section 5.4.2.1, which requires RCP or equal, reinforced concrete pipe, pipe or equal. We show corrugated polyethylene pipe, and our, our opinion, that's now considered an equal, certainly from a flow hydraulic capacity. Most communities and mass DOT allow plastic pipe, but if it needs to be within the right-of-way, it'd be concrete.
Have you a bill coil question?
Do you check with?
Be a bill coil question. It's only as good as the RCP if it's lay problem. Proper stone better, proper stone, no better than what we've seen.
And is this one going to come from Peter? That, because the same three of you, especially, you all have waivers.
And I would, you know, you mentioned the number of waivers, but when we did this four years or three, four years ago, it was right about the time you were revising the regs, there weren't near as many waivers. So a lot of the stuff was done to comply four years ago, doesn't comply today, so the list of waivers grew substantially in that.
Would you have 14?
This was done in 13.
No, but.
Oh, how many waivers? No, I didn't even count.
11, 14, 15.
Some of them, Mr. Chairman, are actually the construction end, which we don't.
And I wanna defer to John or whatever he knew of that, because I made a couple of notes here that I wanted, when they were making all of the adjustments, not the 1-inch equals 40 feet, but there was some things you spoke of after that.
The datum.
And all that stuff, and I'm just not familiar with it.
No, 1 inch to 40 feet is good because you can see more on the plan instead of, you know, you're trying to fit all this in a 200 scale, you can fit it in the 40 scale, if you get, it's more definitive, you can see much better on a 40 scale.
But there was those other things you said.
I'm sorry about the adjustment between the 88.
The USGS, they, you go through an adjustment, if there's only seven tenths across the site, what they're gonna do is just gonna take that seven tenths and spread it across to all the elevations to make it right. That's all they're gonna do.
As long as you.
Yeah.
I circled, Mr. Chairman, I circled three, that seemed like we had questions on, that was like the curving type, just in granite on the radialis and 100.
I'd like to see the, wherever it's over 100.
I just wanted his opinion on it at least, and then detention basin fencing, as you mentioned, and then the reinforced concrete pipe that Mr. Regu mentioned.
That's a bill coil question.
Yeah, that's a thing to look into.
I assume the corrugated pipe works fine.
Yeah, you're right, there's a very particular bedding requirement, and the corrugated pipes go a long way, it's a lot more rigid than it used to be, there had been failures and there were concerns about chemicals and that's kind of been discounted.
I'd like to see the sidewalk mainly on the east side of the new road. And then as we spoke, something that where, right where it, not the Faith Ave, if you could have some, where the people could cross and not be on the road walking, but we have some access from the.
It's within their lot for safety purposes, yeah, maybe these things coming up toward Washington Street, the path going down to the old Faith Ave, but a little of that.
Well, if I may, that's probably a good segue to the site plan modification because a lot of that stuff relates to what they would like to do with the property, assuming this goes through, which is what, this with the purple road shows.
And then to go over this landscaping that wasn't done in the past plan and?
Correct, and I'll talk, I'll talk to that.
And are you gonna create for this definitive subdivision plan, new landscaping plan that will be inclusive of all that that wasn't done?
Right, under the site plan modification, the application was related to a number of things that, that were done that shouldn't have been done, if you will, or were not approved, as well as some sort of administrative things. They bought a piece of property essentially the day they got their approval, and then they expanded onto it. So the approval didn't cover a piece of property that they worked on, if you will. The zoning board rectified that when we added that. This, this little dog ear over here, there was a house here, that's what this lot is. When, when the approvals were issued, this was the extent of their property. Within a few days, they bought this, they demolished the house, and they expanded the parking lot. So it was the zoning board, the planning board, and the Concom all had approved a smaller project, if you will. So the zoning board and the Concom have rectified that because we added that. It's all about one parcel, this used to be six or eight parcels. The town now calls this all a piece, so it's a little simpler to keep track of, but suffice it to say, this parcel wasn't allowed, there was no work allowed on this parcel by you folks or the zoning board or the Concom. So they did all the work, went back to the zoning board, acknowledged, you know, acknowledged that that had been added, the new permit, you know, addresses this piece. The Concom likewise, their recent approval addresses this piece. So with you folks, to modify the site plan, what we've done is we've said, look, they overbuilt the building, they built 30% or more than they, they got a building permit for it, but they didn't have site plan approval, they didn't have conservation approval, they didn't have zoning approval. And David Masson came and spoke to the zoning board, he may have come to this board years ago to explain why he built a bigger building that you folks have all approved, but without going back. I'm sorry.
Even originally with the, as you're coming in off Washington Street, right there, right where you hand this, go to swing the arc, no, down, yeah, right there, when they're, some of their very first meetings, we asked, you know, no tree cutting, no anything be done, and we left the meeting at 6:30 the next morning, they were, they had those trees skinned out of there. I mean, you know, we're trying to work in good faith too.
So, we got involved because we got called by someone to survey the property and do an ass build of the foundation. So, we turned it into the building commissioner. He said, the building's bigger than what was approved. And I was, I didn't know what was approved, because we didn't do the work. So, we decided, okay, let's figure out how we get to hopefully this point, you know, where everything's been rectified. So, so from the site plan modification, this is, this is the plan, this is the building. The current faith Ave is out here. This is the proposed right-of-way. Anything in green would be, and stippled, would be pavement that has to come out for them to reduce their amount of impervious, to meet the zoning requirements.
So, they told you you have to do that?
Correct, that would have to happen. So, it's not obvious, but this is all paved today. That's just one big field apart. They would have to, they would have to remove it. Likewise, this is, some of this along Faith is, is the shoulder of Faith, but some of this is not, that stippled area right there, this piece here, along here. And then this is the existing road, which we show removal of roughly half the existing road. And if you've driven it, you know it's deeply banged. And what, what that would allow them to do is essentially bury that retaining wall, make it flat, and then they'd have the required buffer to the, because you're not supposed to park within 10 feet of the, of the property line. That, this would actually give them the required buffer and then some, because it would get them to their open space requirements. So, I didn't, we didn't create a planting plan for this, because we'd have to move all the plants that were approved. We have to come up with new quantities. And we didn't know if this was going to fly with this board or the Concom, so we didn't spend the time to redo a planting plan. But we know there was a planting plan approved for, for this building. It had a minimum number of qua, you know, minimum quantity. There was a lighting plan with a minimum amount of lighting. Actually, the lighting is in. We've accommodated the lighting with the islands, so they don't have to rip it all out.
Sure.
So, let me see if I understand this. So, in order to meet like the impervious surface requirements, that's going to require that that faith Ave, the one that's taken offline, will be acquired by-
Oh, I'm sorry, over here.
Will be acquired by Masson in order to meet that requirement.
Right, because they'd be-
For this design.
For this design, because they're giving up all this land over here that they're presently using to meet the requirement. They'd be giving the town this, this strip, and they'd be abandoning this piece, because it's on the wrong side. So, their lot, it gets reshaped. They gained some land, but they need to rip up some of the pavement, because some of what they're getting rid of is already, is already counting as open space, if you will, so.
The land that the town's gaining is like, you know, it's not, doesn't have any good value. I mean, we got, we got a road, but we're basically doing the road readjustment and relocation for your sake.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I would-
I mean, I don't have a big deal with it. But, I mean, I'm just saying, it's, I don't want to project it like you're doing something on behalf of us.
I don't think there's any mystery that then why don't we do it?
You're not really, but I'm just saying, I don't want it to be construed like that.
I think, I'll, I'll say this from, I'll call myself third-party disinterested. I'm not a town resident, I don't work for the Masson, I live and under contract. I mean, I think there's a better road design, it's straighter, it takes that kink out. And it's obviously shorter, which means let's work for the town. You know, would they do it without being in the position they're in? Of course not, so.
And it's not a good road at all.
Yeah, it's, I, you know, I think it's an overall positive thing to be, to do it.
So, so to your point, yes, they would have, when they give this land away, quite a bit of which is presently not paved, they're going to lose a lot of that non-impervious area. So, when they acquire this, they've got to rip, because Faith is mostly paved, they've got to rip a good portion of that out.
I, I would like to see us have a, look for a peer review, because of all the waivers and just the whole thing. I'd like to see like a brand-new whole plan with everything on it, as if this was just the way you're going to do it, and it would be inclusive of what wasn't done as landscaping, but will be done, because you're going to be changing all of that area down there. And then you can incorporate-
So, this is one item that's contingent upon a lot of this. And this is the mass DOT right-of-way that would be needed. Or, or one way or another, let me explain this. So, in the corner of this property, in the northeast corner, there's a, I'll call it a junction box with a pad. And, and speaking of mass DOT earlier today, there's two options that they see as feasible. One is Diamond could maintain an easement access for them to reach this. So, across their common driveway that they'd be proposing, they'd have to have some sort of easement for mass DOT.
Common driveway now?
Um, not common driveway, excuse me, their newly proposed driveway.
Site driveway.
Thank you.
This, basically along this stretch, they would need to be able to get back to this corner.
Yes.
Right, and you're, are you going to maintain any part of that road, or that for your own people to drive on?
Yeah, they would, most of, this section of Faith would essentially be retained. What we're showing here is that rather than leaving the driveway straight through, which-
Oh, problem.
Sorry, rather than leaving the driveway, this is present, presently Faith, it's a straight shot. We realigned this to be, at this point, so that people would just want to continue straight in as they come up. That they would see the curve before. But we have site just to be on the same-
But you, for the purposes of your facilities, are going to maintain like a little, a small road that will be able, you will access your parking lot.
That's correct, yep, this stretch of Faith.
But you're not going to bring it around the curve?
Uh, well, well, we should-
Because I know you said you were going to use some of that to like grade it down or-
Yep, well, this, right, if you drive it today, there's a retaining wall on the inside of the curve. So, what we're proposing is they can just fill out, and this would be flat, rather than that steep drop. And then this is where that small detention area, where we're talking about the fence. And then there's a drainage swale here, so this area will be-
That goes down deep down in that?
Well, it starts to haul off, yeah, there's a fence, there's actually a fence that was put up by the DOT right along the property line. And once you get to the fence, it's fairly flat, but then it's a steep slope down to the highway's curve. Correct, so they would use this portion of it, and they would use this portion of it. This outer piece would need to go.
Now, when you're coming up Faith Ave, like your right-hand turn, is your site driveway going to be gated?
This, this is not gated, though.
No, what do you-
I take that back. We actually, let me go back to the old plan. Because originally, there was a discussion about gating this so only, so that people would use this as the main entrance. So, I'd go back to the, this, there is a gate shown there, but we talked about it years ago. I can check how we left it, because I collect my old notes. But yes, there was, there was a point where that, there were people, there would be a, this would be for deliveries. Right now, they're loading vehicles wherever they can. So, this, this is set up for truck deliveries. This is your primary point of entering into the site. But I, we did show a gate, I'll have to check it from my old notes.
Yeah, because we, also, we allow no loading of, or unloading of vehicles on the road.
Right, and that would be done entirely within the-
Just furthermore on the mass DOT thing. So, if easement is an option for Diamond, the other option would be for the Diamond to relocate that block somewhere to mass DOT and Eversource's.
And what's, what's feeding in the box, gas or power?
Oh, I know, it's Eversource, so, yeah, so, um-
It's for the lighting and for the intersection. From speaking to the engineer and what's there, it's their lighting control box for the interchange, so. If we, if it were able to be moved back to somewhere in this area, Diamond's expensive, then they would need the easement, they can just pull over and do it.
So, what mass DOT recommended was to hold a meeting at some point next week or the following week with Diamond's, all parties involved, including DOT, to discuss which measure they'd like to take. Before that took place, wanted to weigh in with the board to see if you prefer one or the other.
To me, it'd be better if it was up with it in, I mean, if I was you, I'd rather not have them having to come.
Yeah, rather relocate it, if it's possible.
Just go where it's on the public road or whatever and-
Wouldn't need an easement or anything?
An easement, no.
Nice, so it's a little contingent upon that, because if you needed an easement, you had to maintain pavement, it could affect your pervious surface, and so that's kind of way heavy on, on how to move forward.
I think we can certainly move, at a minimum, we can be moved this far. But I think ideally, it gets moved here, or it gets moved, if it can be moved to the bottom of the slope along the road, so they can access from below, then that would work too. I don't know what they're looking for right now. That's part of why we, I think that may be why they want to meet.
Just to answer your other question about peer review. We have had this through Graves Engineering. Because Graves did their first review of this project in 2013, and it hasn't changed all that much, other than what's been done with the Concom and stuff. Waterman has addressed those peer review comments with this version of the plan. So, Graves Engineering would only be doing one follow-up review to the amendments to their first review. So, we only have one review, which is why I held off on that to see what we're doing here between easement or relocation of that junction box and whatnot. Has it affected any per impervious surfaces, drains, calculations, or whatnot? Try to put this in front of Graves once, so it wouldn't, so don't do it too early. So, the board had other recommendations that would expect a little later.
That's peer review, I'm not quite understanding, because you're talking about a peer review for just the Eversource relocation?
Or any other changes that the board had, and you mentioned sidewalk as one, and-
To look at, to review all the waivers, and just to look at your drainage, to see what you are going to show them. I want them to review the plan as they're going to redraw it, to incorporate all those changes that you said, that you have to take out the light, as if, just as if you were starting new.
And I think, and I think that's what Matt was trying to say.
That's what I want to see. Because then we're going to get all confused. We're looking, I mean, we're not, you know, I'm not a rocket scientist, so I can't-
And half the board, I'm sorry, half the board wasn't even here originally, so.
So, you'd be starting brand-new, it's much better off for you to, I think, to do it this way. And, you know, we're going to try to work with you so that we, it comes out.
Thank you. We met with DCG in early May, and there were some comments from the Auburn Water District to realign the water system to simplify. So, we were going to make that change, we were going to make any changes that came out of this meeting, the mass DOT. Then we'd give you a new set of plans, and presumably that would be going to Graves.
It would be good for Matt and/or you, when you have to check with the water and sewer department or anything that we have that's utilities, that would be disruptive or that we're not going to be able to access after that. We don't need an easement to get to them, or can you redo them then? Do we need them to go under the loop if they in fact do? And I don't think that's sewered in there.
It's not, that was a pump station. With the, the utilities, it's drainage, and with the water district, it would be a new water main. So, right now, the water loops around, the new water main would be installed. This would become all private. So, we've worked, I think we've worked that out with the water district. That's one of the changes that I need to make.
But we want you to come back and say that to us.
Yeah, no, right, and that's why we've held off, yeah, and that.
Would the existing water main that goes around the loop be abandoned?
Part of it. There's a hydrant at the rear that we would probably bring up. We'd probably put a new hydrant in this area, which we don't show. We've left one here, so that's one of the changes. So, from this point to about this point would be abandoned in place. And then their new, their services come in here, so that wouldn't affect their services. And there's no water to the DOT for any purpose. So, it reduces the length of dead end around it, it will improve their water system.
Now, is that tying to Washington Street or is it dead?
No, it, it comes out, it, it, yes, it comes from Washington all the way around. So, basically, the Washington Street connection would be made in this road. So, it did be a new section here with, with two new hydrants on this road and one new hydrant inside the site. We went over that with the fire chief when we met. And the site was designed, that layout was designed to handle tractor trailers for deliveries and handles the fire truck. You asked about employee parking. We were asked designate, designate on the plan the loading and unloading and the employee parking. So, when we did this, you know, either this area or this area will end up being employee parking. But we, we, the table that speaks to the required parking does talk about employee parking. And we'll lay that out, we haven't done it yet. It also puts all the accessible parking right up against the front of the building where the entrance is, and that area was designed for it, it's just not there today. So, I think that's, that's an improvement.
To the chair, which area would you prefer there's employee parking?
Any reference?
In operationally, what works best for you there?
Probably where it's now handled.
Which is in this area?
Yeah.
This shows the west side of the stacked inventory, right?
Yeah, the, the parking spaces are these stripes, this is inventory storage. So, right now, they're, right now, that, this is where they're parking their employees, this hatched area, so.
That would coincide better with what I said, because a good portion of your employees work in the upper building, right?
No, most of them work in the service department. There's, there is probably a quarter of them work in the upper building.
So, we can look at that, we can discuss that internally, and we'll make it clear on the plans.
So, I don't know if each of you are, my thought is to get a brand-new plan of everything that you're going to do. That's what I'd like to see, if it was brand-new law, you're just coming in, and you're going to incorporate all that wasn't done into the new, that is going to be done, and whatever you're going to do, and all the things that happened, the waivers. And we need to get a peer review from someone that will redo that whole project when they're ready with it.
Yes.
The signboard is on Faith Ave as well, if I'm staying incorrect.
They're, they're technically on Washington, but they are the supporters, yeah.
Right. When we approved their plan, they were going to repave, I can't remember which street it was.
Oh, that's, that's on the other side.
That's in the hill cramps on the west side of that property. Between them and BJ's Gas. That goes down onto Faith.
Yeah, that's the Ford deal you're talking about.
Yeah.
If I may, I just kind of have my own question on the sidewalk. Required on the sidewalk for the stretch of road. Presently, I don't believe there's any sidewalks in Faith Ave.
No.
And bringing up, just again, my own personal opinion. Where I see the benefit for it, maybe for, you know, customer, employee foot traffic or whatnot, I'd almost think it's a, it's fine, some of them saying this, I almost think it's a bad thing. We're at a sidewalk here for the reason that, do you want to promote foot traffic on Route 20? Because I think you almost hope-
No, I don't, I'm not, I'm closing that.
I would add any sidewalk going into the building, I would have a sidewalk all the way to the corner.
Not up to Washington Street, just on a section of road. And then where it touches the back of your bank into the property coming across, I said, Matt, they'd have to cut into the bank and put a set of steps and come up and go into the back of the upper facility.
So, furthermore, Mr. Chairman, would it almost be more reasonable to have that sidewalk be more internally in the lot instead of within the roadway?
You have that area, I mean, right now, there's, right now, there's a crosswalk somewhere in this area, and there's essentially a sidewalk connection from, this is the Chevy showroom.
This way, we don't have to maintain.
Down here, and it's all internal. And I think that what Matt is saying is there's, there's a sidewalk here today, or there's a route that's not within the public layout today that would be perpetuated, it wouldn't be removed.
It would be less maintenance for the town.
And then you wouldn't have a sidewalk, all right?
Well, that's, they didn't own all of it, so we won't.
If you put a sidewalk, it's easy for you to sure. Keep it on your property and tell them that we maintain it. With the sidewalk right on you, there's a parking lot right here, diorated, you don't want it to go.
And then where the lake goes.
You keep them out of the parking lot.
Let us, let us show, we'll propose something.
We'll put some, yeah, probably have to come up more than once, so.
How would you make that?
Yeah, internally, right. So, let us, let us put a, an internal sort of pedestrian circulation plan, if you will, that makes it more evident.
Any comments from the audience?
Yes, Mark on Wolfville Street. How many regular, regular parking spaces, how many handicaps spots we have on site? Each spot be available, each handicaps space be available for a van?
Uh, yeah, we have 87 full-size parking spaces on the site. And we have, one, two, three, four, we have five, six rather accessible spaces. This, six accessible, and there are four van spaces out of those six.
So, 10?
I need to-
So, six total, four of which are van accessible.
I'd like to see all 10, as possible.
Van accessible, all the handicaps.
I think we've laid it out to comply with the AAV requirements, and in the little area of reducing parking.
Well, you're going to have to, when you take out those islands and do all of that, and figuring whatever you had to do for the zoning board and whatever they wanted, you're going to, you're going to be having a different amount of parking spaces.
I'm sorry.
When you take all of that.
Well, this, this is actually the plan that we would stick with, plus the sidewalk. There's five, as I just spoke, there are five accessible spaces.
Four, right, you said you had to take out those islands.
No, no, these represent, this is the new parking plan. This would be the result of taking out the pavement.
Those main areas are asphalt they have to-
Yeah, this is presently asphalt, it could be removed to create the new parking lot. So, that's one way they get back to the impervious.
I still think each spot should be available for a van, as many as you can get there. And then nothing, I think this should all-
I'm sorry, we, I think we can make, we can, I don't, I don't see a problem making this eight foot wide, I think it would work.
Okay. And all brand curbing?
We don't, we actually don't show curbing in the site because of the way it's laid out. Outside, inside right now, I'm sorry, outside right now, the requirement is for granite on this curve and this curve. The rest of the road is not granite. the rest of the road is not granted.
Why not? Because people park on, what's the speed, do you know what the speed's going to be, is that the town?
It's posted thirty, and people can't park on this road right now.
So, the new road will be thirty-two, right?
That'd be thirty, correct.
And another thing, I know what Chad mentioned this too, I think that there should be like a corco of rocks to make sure that you don't expose people on that side of the area.
That was Matt, Matt, Mark, that would be the code enforcement officer for Caleb Moody for the town.
Because I remember, I remember, I've lived in Hawaii, I know, we've done things we're supposed to, cut down trees and knock down houses no permit, so the town should really watch it. Okay, thank you.
Right. Scott, any other comments? John?
No, other than the landscape, the plan, we plan to plant some trees and lots of them.
So, our plan is that you will construct your plan, we'll select a peer review company.
I have a, Graves already done it out, they've made the peer review fee, it's just activating it once the revision's...
And when you got that ready, come back?
Yeah, we'll turn the plans around as quickly as possible.
Just wanted to mention about the sidewalk, or potential sidewalk, Mass D O T, I'll let the board know, and if the board wishes to be present along the sidewalk, you may, so it just...
I'm fine with you being the representative. Thank you.
Continuation of...
The next...
What's the next tearing date?
So...
You want it in two weeks, four weeks?
I would say four weeks, but there's...
Four weeks?
So, that's one thing we still have to discuss, if we're going to have a different July schedule or not.
Fourth of July, we met that weekend.
Last year we met on the third week, the third Tuesday in July and the third Tuesday in August. The board is still up and doing the same thing with their Monday schedule. I just don't know if anyone's away.
Say that again, the third week of July?
So, we have one day...
Third Tuesday in July, third Tuesday in August.
What is the date, the third Tuesday of July?
And that's, right now, that would be July eighteenth. We can stick with a regular schedule if you want for now, and do the eleventh, because we only have Diamond on our agenda at this time, we do have a future item, sorry, on June twenty-seventh, but if you want to try for the eleventh of July and make our decision on the twenty-fifth of July at our next meeting, we can do that.
Instead of having it on the eighteenth?
Sure, that might help our current applicant out with time schedule, too, so...
Do you want to have the two meetings in July, or do you want to just go on the...
I'd like to go one in July.
One in July.
One in August.
And one in August.
So, one in July, one in August.
So, would you like the promotion continue to July eleventh, is that...
No, July eighteenth.
Eighteenth, that would probably be safer, because with the holiday, it gives us a lot, gives us a lot of time.
Do we have a motion?
Make the motion to have the next meeting July eighteen.
Okay.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
So, our next meet, scheduled meeting is July eighteenth, and the next one after that would be one in August? Or do we want to wait until July to see what happens?
Uh, we can do that at our next meeting, send it...
Determine what we're doing July eighteenth.
Who's second in that?
I do.
He made it, Scott.
Have a long day, huh, John?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much, Matt, take care, everybody. I have some very brief items to... If you want, Mr. Chairman, I can cruise right through the member discussion stuff, as quick as I can. Unless you want to have to give minutes, Scott, I don't know, I need your vote for any of those.
For me, John, and Scott.
There's a minute.
Let's do the minutes. The minutes of May ninth. Any questions? I have none. Do you have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve the meeting minutes you want done.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there's a vote. Okay, we got Brummer Estate, Matt?
We do, Brummer Estate, I don't have an update on it, I don't feel, Quill continues to work on this.
Speaking of patience, you can't...
Have they, have they gotten back to him with anything?
They've uncovered one of the buried manholes.
So, he was...
I understand, I don't...
I mean, with a magnet, they can't find... They get, they get devices?
Haven't tried that, huh?
I'm not sure.
Using a thousand.
Once you find one, I can just break the TV camera, drop the light, and find the other one.
I cannot...
There you go, being logical again, John.
You can't employ logic, yeah.
Silly me, it's just like work.
Yeah, right.
It's like work.
Can't employ it anywhere.
So, we'll table it for the next meeting, I, I don't have any other information, we still have an associate member vacancy for anyone who would like to be a planning board member, please contact me or reach out to Town Engineer's office. I just wanted to mention that zoning board, there are a few committees working on their solar bylaw now, and at some point, probably within the next handful of weeks, we're really close to a good draft, and I'd like to bring it before this board for comments, before we start that whole public hearing process and stuff, so just to get it to you guys in advance.
This is for solar fields?
Yeah, it's, so far, preliminarily, they're looking to eliminate it from residential areas, and just keep them opening larger areas to commercial buildings, so, but more to follow. Some meetings could have all been discussed, but... We just have a motion to, I don't know, we can do that next meeting, forego the second meeting in June, in July, but we could do that at our next meeting.
I thought we just agreed that we have one on the eighteen.
I see a motion, but...
I'd like the motion to have one meeting in July.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
There's a vote?
Thank you.
July eighteenth, one meeting. August to follow after that.
There was, one other set of minutes, Mr. Chairman, that came out late, these were, I believe, emailed, they may have been in the packets, I don't know, but she listed them out, it was February twenty-fifth.
I got them in the email packet, yes.
Okay, all right, I, I didn't get the whole, so, but I did notice a handful of little things, but unless you guys already did, then we could table it to next meeting, I mean, these were very intense minutes, I certainly respect the work that she hadn't put into it, so it's, this was a long, that was a long meeting.
Do we need a motion for that, Matt, push it off to the next meeting?
No, we'll just table it, and the last thing, under additional content, is something that came up today, I received some, I received a call from the town engineer about Whitetail Run, it's a subdivision, it was Paul Jim's subdivision off of Brook Street, so it's gone...
Preston Goldos now?
Yes, so the call...
Chris and Ali?
Yeah, yeah, I, I call Ali.
I call Ali, yeah.
So, the concern was, as town engineer was out there, is that some of the erosion control measures have failed, I took some photos, I, ready up here for us to look at. But sil fence, hay bales have failed, some of them at lots seven, eight, and nine, which I think numerically are six, eight, and ten on the address, but...
These are what, they go in the pond?
Uh, no, these are on the left side of the road as you drive me to the end of the cul-de-sac, so if you're on Whitetail Run, you're on the left, after Paul Jim, Big House, you stay on there, and so, and so sil, ran right off, right into the white line areas, and you can see the sil fence has destroyed, so I've contacted him and asked him to fix those, and if the board would be willing to make a motion just to send him a letter, so it comes to the developer, not only to repair the failed erosion control measures, but also to sweep these, the street as is right now, because it almost seems like a dirt road despite it being a light road, so, those are two of Mr. Quill's...
No one's intensive for that.
I'll make that motion to send a letter to Justin Goldos, coming down to the site plans failure.
Can we make a motion to what's in that letter?
Pardon?
We make a motion to what's in that letter, there's no more construction takes place until the sil fence is in place and the road is swept.
We don't have stop work order authority, the only one who does is the conservation commission or the building inspector through not giving out...
Well, what happens if they don't follow the conditions on the plan?
From the town engineer?
If they're not, we could pull public hearing, as vote to potentially rescind the project.
You want to have, you want to put that in there, that we will have a public hearing?
The way I...
I've thought down a certain amount of time.
I wouldn't recommend it at this time, maybe we put a timeframe on the letter, and if we don't get compliance, we'll invite him to a future meeting, but we, you don't have stop work authority.
How much of a bond do we have on him?
Uh, more than sufficient, I forget how.
That can be put in the letter, it's not done by certain, it's like a lot of time, the portion of the bond will be used to replace the sil fence.
I give him thirty days, that's more than enough.
Thirty days, I give him seven.
Well, perfect, fine with me.
I think that's very generous.
There's no need to add.
He said seven, I'm going with that too.
That's generous, it should be three.
I mean, we should have it, I think by default, we're at least giving it to our next meeting, so you get, you end up with thirteen days from the day I write the letter to him, until the board finds out on the twenty-seventh.
All right, two weeks or something.
Make it clear.
So, it's be a motion to send a letter to the developer for fourteen-day compliance to repair sil fence and erosion control measures, and this...
Sweep the street.
That was your motion, right?
I guess.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Now, you might put in it, something, reference, bond.
Um, I can be creative.
Yeah, we need to, we need to really step up on all this kind of stuff.
I think Mr. Quill brings my attention, it was very helpful, so building inspector and I went out there and looked at it, I took photos, but they're very large, and they didn't get over here, onto the computer, forgot, so...
All right, show up next meeting, because it won't be gone.
They've obviously failed, it's, it's not a major problem, but it's, it's failing.
Is it failed because of improper installation?
Well, some of them look like it's just sil fence and not hay bale, so, yeah.
There you go.
Just do it anymore.
All right, but sil fence, it doesn't act, because hay bales are supposed to go behind the sil fence, that's not true, and it helps support the sil fence.
People do it too.
That's what we're supposed to do, because it's in front, that's the way the media grows.
And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any questions? Any other questions, do you want to talk about much of that time? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Elizabeth, we now adjourned.